Hello and welcome to the Canexus special meeting of the members. My name is Annette Ribet and I am the Chief Strategy and Governance Officer and Corporate Secretary for Canexus. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge the challenging circumstances many of our employees and members are facing due to the wildfires affecting the Laurent community. To those who have recently been evacuated, please know that our thoughts are with you during this incredibly difficult time. At Canexus, the safety and well-being of our people remain our highest priority. We are actively reaching out to affected employees to ensure they are safe and supported, and we are deeply grateful for the resilience, care, and compassion our teams continue to demonstrate. Thank you for being here today and for being part of a cooperative that stands together in times of need. I would like to acknowledge that while we are meeting virtually, we are meeting remotely with members from across lands covered from Treaties 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 10, the traditional lands of the Cree, Dakota, Dene, Lakota, Nakota, and Soto peoples, as well as the homeland of the Métis. This acknowledgement is an important part of our history and our future, and reminds us of our commitment to the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action. Canexus is honored in these calls to action, specifically Action 92. We are focusing on this call to action through workplace inclusion and opportunities in education, training, community investments and partnerships, and relationship building with the Indigenous community and its leaders. Today's virtual meeting is expected to last approximately 60 minutes. If you have any questions throughout the presentation, you can submit these using the Q&amp;A feature. We will respond to these questions along with any that were submitted at registration during the Q&amp;A portion of the meeting. And joining today is Mr. Stuart Wachowski, our legal advisor from McDougal Gully, and he is available as needed to answer any questions regarding the special resolution and corresponding materials. Finally, as we are meeting virtually, we should all be used to any potential meeting disruptions. Please bear with us if any issues occur. We are recording this meeting and it will be available on our website at canexus.ca/vote within 24 hours of tonight's event. I would like to confirm for the Chair and members that we have achieved quorum for this meeting exceeding the minimum requirement of 25. The notice of special meeting was provided to members on May 6th along with all meeting materials which meets the requirements of the Credit Union Act to advise members at least 21 days in advance of the meeting. Thank you to everyone joining us. I will now turn the meeting over to our Chair.
Thank you, Annette, and hello, everyone. My name is Ken Kozelowski and I am Board Chair for Canexus. I was first elected to the Board in 2020 and have served as Chair since 2023. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank all of you for joining us today, from wherever that may be. I know that those attending include Canexus members, employees, special guests, and Board members from across the province. It is a pleasure and a privilege to be able to connect with you, our members, virtually today. This special meeting of the members has been called to present the Board-recommended special resolution to merge with Cornerstone and Synergy Credit Unions and the Amalgamation Agreement. We also want to ensure that our members have an opportunity to ask questions about the recommended merger prior to the opening of the vote. I would like to encourage you to submit any questions you have through the Q&amp;A feature at any time, and we will ensure these are answered after the formal presentation of information. Please note that questions are not anonymous on this platform, and only members may ask questions at this meeting. And as a reminder, only Canexus members may move, second, and vote on the recommendations presented. Now let's quickly cover the technical portion of the meeting. I'm going to walk you through how to vote and recommend motions. You will see on the top of your screen a chat bubble icon. When selecting that option, the active motion will appear as a poll on the right hand, on the right side of your screen for you to cast your vote. To recommend a motion when called, you will write "I move" or "I second", and submit this through the Q&amp;A feature. You can find the Q&amp;A feature icon on the top of your screen next to the chat bubble icon. I'll take the first two members. Let's start with something fun so we can practice how voting will work. If you haven't yet, select the chat bubble icon on the right side of your monitor. You should now see an opportunity to vote. What do you think? With the Ryder season officially starting on June 5th, will the Riders win the Grey Cup in 2025? While we wait for the results of this poll, here's a fact about Canexus and our history with mergers. Canexus is the outcome of 58 mergers of credit unions across the province through almost 90-year history. These mergers have enabled us to deliver and improve products and services across the province to 145,000 members. Now, back to the poll results. I know people have voted that they do not believe the Riders will win the Grey Cup. Quite surprising. Anyway, we will wait and see. I guess the first game is tomorrow night. So time to kick things off for the meeting. As you will see from the agenda, after some formalities, we will share some information on the recommended merger with Cornerstone and Synergy Credit Unions, including how members will be able to vote, which will officially open tonight. Finally, towards the end of the meeting, we'll hold a Q&amp;A to address questions submitted during tonight's presentation. Our goal is to ensure you have all the information you need about the special resolution and the amalgamation agreement before the voting period begins. If we're unable to answer every question during the meeting, we will follow up with you directly afterwards. I would now like to call for a motion from a member to approve the agenda, which includes acknowledging you have received access to the amalgamation agreement, special resolution, and the 2025 annual meeting minutes. In order to make a motion, please use the Q&amp;A feature and simply write "I move". I will take the first two members' names that come through for the mover and the seconder. Can I get a member to move the motion? Moved by Pan, seconder by Tanya. Thank you. The motion to approve the agenda is now available in the chat feature. Please vote yes if you are in favor or no if you are against. I'll give everyone a second to vote, and as you do so, I will share another fact about the merger history of Canexus. Two of the largest mergers over the course of Canexus history include, in 2003, Sherwood Credit Union merged with Moose Jaw and Assiniboia Credit Unions to form Canexus Credit Union. In 2006, Canexus merged with Prince Albert, Heartland, and Mussumum Credit Unions to form Canexus Credit Union 2006. Let's get back to the motion. The results are in, and it, motion has carried. The next motion we have is to approve the minutes from the 2025 annual meeting. The minutes are available on Canexus's website, and we're provided with the materials for this meeting. Can I have a member move and another member second? The approval of the 2025 annual meeting minutes using the same process as before, submitting the comment "I move". The mover is Jackie, seconder is Catherine. Is there any discussion regarding the 2025 annual meeting minutes? If there is, please post your comment or question now in the Q&amp;A feature. Okay, the motion to approve the minutes is now available. Please vote yes if you are in favor or no if you are against. I'll give everyone a few seconds to vote, and as you do so, I will share our final merger fact. This one, a bit of a move-forward looking. If the recommended merger is approved, the new credit union will serve 200,000 members, stretching across the province from Lloydminster to Mussumum and Laurent to Coronac. Now, back to the motion. The motion is carried. Thanks, everyone. Now to begin tonight's presentation of the resolution to recommend the merger of Canexus, Cornerstone, and Synergy, we have a short five-minute video featuring the CEOs and Board Chairs from each of the credit unions. Following the video, Selena and I will share more and present the formal recommendation.
This is a journey we have been on trying to find a way to service members across Saskatchewan. We really want our members to be able to do business with a credit union anywhere in the province, and this merger accomplishes that.
For those of you that play ball, you know when you hit a homerun, when that ball hits your bat, you know it's a homerun? Well, right from the first meeting that we had with Synergy and Cornerstone, I felt it was a homerun.
When you look at the ability to cover Saskatchewan, it's amazing that we have no overlap. So I think when we come together, we have the scale that we're going to need to be competitive in the future. It's just the right thing to do at the right time.
So with the vote, there will be some changes that you will experience. One of them will be, will decide the name of your new credit union. In addition to that, we will go through the process of integrating our system, so there may be some pauses in the service experience. However, we are very much committed to minimizing those disruptions to ensure you have a smooth experience as we work towards integrating our three organizations into one.
Post our vote, and once we understand the days that we will start to make some changes, we will communicate with you early and often. This is foundational as we make some of these changes to things like our core banking and digital banking, to serve you better, to be able to create that foundation to continue to reinvest.
And don't forget, those changes are going to bring benefit to you. We're doing this so we can add, enhance the value that we bring to our members, enhance the experience that you have. So we'll take you along the journey, every step of the way, and when we're through this, there's going to be lots of benefit for members.
What won't change is our commitment to you, our members, to deliver exemplary member service. We're also committed to our communities. We're going to be there for you and show up like you always expect us to be. And to our employees, we will continue to be committed to you to enhance your learning and development so you feel confident in your ability to serve our members.
What you will find that won't change is us guided by the cooperative values, the cooperative principles that are there that guide both management and our Board of Directors. Your members own our credit union. We'll continue to elect that Board of Directors that will listen to you and support you all the way through. For our employees, you know that you have a strong place to start your career and continue to grow with the right learning, development, and support in an inclusive environment. Last but not least, you'll continue to see us support our communities in a way that's meaningful to you with our donations and volunteerism.
And finally, our communities we serve, our commitment to you to be local, to be present, and invest in what matters to those communities we serve.
We don't merge. We need to continue to face all the same pressures that we've been trying to face for years. Digital investment, regulatory pressure, and our members, every time we do a survey, want better rates, lower fees. So when I think about all of those things, what will we maybe have to reduce if we don't merge? Is it our community investment? Is it some of the service that we do today? Is something have to give along the way to make all those other pressures come true?
So Canexus has been in existence for over 85 years. This is a very important vote for us, for the future of Canexus. And I ask all the members to come out and vote. It's your credit union, one member, one vote, regardless of the amount of money you have invested or loans that you have with us. You have to determine the future of this credit union. So we ask you, ask all the questions that you want. Try to understand. We've went through several months of working with this. We're very convinced as a Board and as management that this is the right thing for us to do.
As mentioned by our Directors, they've recommended this merger. So have we as management, so are our staff. Come in and ask them, be curious, ask their opinion, ask some questions if you still have them, and from June 3rd to June 13th, come out, vote yes.
I am a member of your credit union as well, and I am recommending this because I believe it is the right decision, and I hope you do too. It's important for every member to exercise that right. June 3rd to 13th, we are asking for your support. As a Board of Directors, we wouldn't be bringing this to you if we thought it was a mistake. But we believe the benefits are really important for credit unions and for each individual member of Cornerstone.
So on June 3rd to 13th, we're asking you to come, vote yes for the merger of Canexus, Cornerstone, and Synergy. Thank you.
I know the video we just shared covered the why of the recommended merger, but I thought it was important to reinforce why Canexus is recommending this step and asking for your approval on the resolution being presented to merge. Like many industries, financial services face rising costs, new and intensifying competition, economic volatility, and increasing regulatory demands. Together, we are better set up to navigate these challenges while continuing to offer the services, innovation, and local decision-making you expect. With $15 billion in assets under management, this merger will build on the success of our three credit unions, creating a stronger, more resilient financial institution while also staying true to our shared values. I know you might be asking why we are recommending this merger now, especially after all three credit unions had a strong financial year. Now is the right time to merge. Because we are strong, we are not being forced into this decision. We are choosing it, proactively positioning ourselves to navigate increasing regulatory, technological, and competitive pressures while ensuring we maintain the level of service our members expect. We don't want to wait until external forces limit our choices. We want to shape our own future, ensuring that our credit union remains locally driven, community-focused, and financially sustainable for generations to come. I'd like to share some of the information about our merger partners. Cooperatives are built on the model of working together, sharing, and growing. Through discussions and conversations between the Boards and management teams of Canexus, Cornerstone, and Synergy, it became clear that our three credit unions have a strong alignment in values and strategic priorities. Canexus manages over $10 billion in assets with 30 locations across Saskatchewan, 145,000 members, and an employee base of around 900. Cornerstone manages over $2.7 billion in assets with 15 branches within east-central Saskatchewan, 30,000 members, and an employee base of 280. Synergy manages over $2.8 billion in assets with 12 branches across west-central Saskatchewan, serving over 27,000 members and has an employee base of almost 240. While we serve different regions and vary in size, we are united by a common goal: to support the long-term success of our members and our communities. We are strong, like-minded credit unions, committed to a member-first approach, and a vision of being an economic catalyst for Saskatchewan. Now I'll turn it over to Selena Philpott, CEO of Canexus, to share more.
Thanks, Ken. We understand with the merger, there are many questions and members wanting to know what to expect and what are the benefits of moving forward. After a thorough due diligence process, each of our Boards have unanimously approved the business case for the recommended merger. This decision confirms that merging will allow us to make the necessary investments to stay strong, competitive, committed to serving our members, both now and for generations to come. We can say with confidence that the merger is the right proactive step to keep money in our members' pockets while securing a strong future for our credit union. Through this merger, collectively, we are committed to the following: prioritizing investments in our digital banking, to modernize your banking experience, adding new functionality to deliver an experience that is easy, secure, and offers convenient access. By combining our investments, we will get there faster. I want to reinforce that our combined branch network has no overlap, allowing us to be sustainable without closing locations as part of this merger. We will serve Saskatchewan with 57 branch locations in 50 communities, giving you more ways to bank where, when, and how you want. We will offer low-to-no-fee options that are accessible to all while still offering competitive rates and fees. We know that this is important to our members, so the new credit union is committed to providing options. Having these options and saving through competitive rates and fees is so important. With that, we're proud to commit that we will also share our profits through a modern rewards program, putting money back in our members' pockets. There are lots of great models. We look forward to the new credit union, building a program you can be excited about as a member owner, really feel part of your credit union. We have increased financial and lending capacity, so as your farm or business grows, we will grow with you. We are excited about this one. As your business partner for every stage of your success and growth, we will be there in your corner. Your trusted advisor remains local, local people serving local members. Decision-making will remain rooted in the communities we serve. No matter how much we grow, we will remain a member-owned cooperative financial institution. We pride ourselves in being able to make decisions locally to support the needs of our members. Our leadership and governance will remain accessible to the members. Our members and communities will still be at the heart of everything we do. We will expand access to specialized expertise like wealth management, estate service, and mobile mortgage specialists. This is about coming together to create something strong. We will have access to more financial experts and advice. Our team will be empowered with the technology and insights to provide proactive, needs-based advice and solutions tailored to your financial goals. We are committed to personalized service and modern offerings to meet our members' diverse needs. And our profits stay local, with 5% of pre-tax earnings reinvested into our local communities, further strengthening Saskatchewan. We remain committed to making a positive impact through sponsorships, volunteering, and community support. We will help Saskatchewan thrive. Your community voice will be heard by the new credit union the same way it is today, through the Board of Directors. The Board is elected by members and is accountable to members and the communities it serves. And because we know that your credit union means more than bricks and mortar, we want to assure you that we are committed to our employees. The merger will create new opportunities for current and future employees. We're committed to retain engaged team members that want to be part of the new credit union, invest in career development, explore new growth potential, and strive to continue as a top employer in Saskatchewan. Back over to you, Ken.
Well, thanks, Selena. The special resolution was available with the special meeting materials and is on Canexus's website. It states that the Canexus Board of Directors recommends to its members that Canexus amalgamate with Cornerstone and Synergy Credit Unions with a proposed effective amalgamation date of January 1st, 2026. The approval of the amalgamation and the amalgamation agreement must be passed by members by way of a special resolution. The amalgamation agreement was included with the special meeting materials and is available on Canexus's website. In summary, the agreement states the amalgamating credit unions, Canexus, Cornerstone, and Synergy agree to amalgamate as one credit union, and that each member will become a member of the amalgamated credit union on the date of the amalgamation on January 1st, 2026. The amalgamation agreement contains the proposed articles of incorporation, bylaws, and the first directors of the amalgamated credit union. The auditors of the amalgamated credit union will be Deloitte LLP. If the membership of Canexus approves the amalgamation, but one of either Cornerstone or Synergy do not approve the amalgamation, Canexus and the other approving credit union will amalgamate.
Thank you, Ken and Selena. With the special resolution and amalgamation presented, we will now open for any questions that members may have on the recommendation for Canexus to merge with Cornerstone and Synergy. To allow for those attending some time to submit their questions, we will first address the pre-submitted questions relevant to the resolution that were provided through the registration process. So, Selena, I might start with you. Many members pre-submitted questions about the no-fee checking account. Members are asking if no-fee accounts will be kept with no fee with the same features.
Yeah, appreciate the question, and we know that the no-fee account is important to our members. So we are committed, as we have stated in our 10 commitments to our members, to provide a no-fee and a low-fee offering. So that is our commitment.
Another member asked if the merger will result in any increased fees for members for other products pointing to e-transfer fees and interest rate charges. So do you want to continue on that theme?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So we are always looking at our cost structure as a credit union. That's something that we constantly visit, has nothing to do with a merger, it's just really the cost of us doing business. Our desire is to always provide as much value to our members, and in order to do so, we have to make sure that we balance our cost structure and deliver the products and services that you need. So we do look at fees, but it's part of our regular business operations, not aligned to the merger decision at all.
All right, thanks, Selena. Ken, I think this question might be directed to you. So what is the real reason for the merger, a member asked?
Well, thank you. That's a very good question from the member. And Selena and I both tried to touch on it during the formal presentation. And we've actually spent several months, the teams working together as the credit unions, coming up with an answer to that question. I want to make three points that I think clarify the reason for the merger and, no matter the size of the credit unions. The first point is called shared resilience. And all sizes of credit unions, no matter big or small, face challenges. And those challenges are cost increases and sometimes astronomical increases year over year, technological investments that are required for the credit union, the bar is being raised all the time as far as the regulatory requirements, and that's required given the complexity of today's world and protecting the members' deposits. And finally, incessant competition. We used to have competition from the banks. We now have competition from new players almost every day and fintechs. And so all of these things come together as challenges for all credit unions. And we feel we would be much more effective and economical if we faced these challenges together as one credit union. And it showed up in the business case. These types of things were justified. The second point that I want to make is that we want members to be lifetime members of the credit union. And there are times when we have small to medium-sized businesses or agriculture producers that are very successful, and as their business grows, it sometimes becomes very difficult for Canexus to continue to provide services to them. Now, with a $15 billion credit union, we will be able to be a lifetime support for all of these businesses, and that's exactly what we want as the credit union. And third and the final thing is our reach across the province. We now are going to have 57 branches across 50 locations throughout the province. So it's going to increase not only the Canexus reach, but the credit union reach. We will truly be a provincial credit union. And the other issue on that side of it is that because we are going to become quite a large credit union even in Canada, it is going to increase our voice both on a provincial level and on a national level. So again, to the member, thank you for that question.
Thanks, Ken. Selena, the next question has to do with mortgages and specifically out-of-province mortgages, and wondering if the merger will change how difficult it is for credit unions to offer out-of-province mortgages.
Yeah, the merger will not increase any complexity or create any challenge. Today, we offer that service for our members who have decided to move to a different province, and we provide that support to move along with you so that we can support you through your credit needs. So absolutely, you'll have that service and it'll be there within the new merged entity as well.
All right. This has to do with sponsorship. As Canexus has grown, it started sponsoring and spending money on large projects rather than being active and supporting small rural communities, and wondering if this will continue, I assume, through the mergers. So maybe, Selena, if you want to take that one?
Yeah, for sure. I appreciate the question. So what we found is, as a community, a credit union that's involved in our community, we want to support large initiatives to help them get off the ground. And typically, these large initiatives require a significant contribution, or they'll never take form. On the other side of that ask that comes is also the coverage that it offers. So it's not just one community, but it covers a larger community, so many regions of the province. So we want to continue to show up in a very big way in order to be that credit union that shows up for our members and can get big projects done and get them off the ground. At the same time, though, we recognize that there is very important initiatives in our local communities. So Canexus had made a change this year where we are extending funds to our locations, our branches, for those locations to make decisions that resonate with their members. So whatever the initiative is, it's a local community decision. Our branches have been empowered to make those decisions with the funds that we have extended to them. So that's our way of finding balance. We want to make sure that we put our money in places that are important to our members, so giving that local community an opportunity to make those choices, and at the same time...
and at the same time, be part of big initiatives that really are needed within our province to get things started and get them off the ground. So it's a balance.
Selena, maybe another question that has to do with operations. So a member is asking about, expects that there will be platform switches and integration activities if the merger goes through and asking how we will ensure that any future changes are smooth, both for members and employees.
Yeah, very important questions. I'm very thankful that you brought that forward. So with any kind of change, there will be things that need to take place. So what we are committed is to trying to make this transition as smooth as possible. And part of that process is to identify where there is going to be change and informing our members as soon as possible. And in addition to making that awareness known, it's also to support you through that change. So we recognize that it's two levels of support. Number one, we have to support our employees so that they feel comfortable and confident to then support you. So telling you in advance, giving you lots of support is what we're committed to doing so and trying to minimize the disruption that will take place as we work towards bringing three organizations into one.
Selena, there's another member, just staying on the employee theme. Will there be any job losses and will Thrive continue as it is?
Yes, appreciate the question. So as part of our 10 commitments, one of those commitments includes commitment to our employees. So for every employee that is engaged and wants to be part of this new entity and is wanting to work through this journey with us, we are committed to them. So that includes through ensuring that employment. As for Thrive, we're committed to continue to provide Thrive services as you are familiar with them today.
That's great. Ken, maybe this has to do with when the votes are released, the results, and asking if there will be a breakdown of how many people voted in branch versus online? And will there be a breakdown of how many voted in favor versus not in favor? And will this information be available to members?
Yeah, good question. We will not be able to disclose branch locations or how people voted. But what we will disclose is we will disclose the total number of votes from our members and the amounts that were in favor and not in favor.
Excellent. And then we have one question that's come through from those attending this evening. Maybe, Ken, this might be a question for you. Does approval require a majority of all members or a majority of those members who vote?
Yeah, so that's a very good clarification question. I certainly would like all members to vote and a majority of the members to vote. But what we need is the members that vote, we do need 75% of them to vote in favor of the merger in order for it to pass. So to be clear, 75% of the members that vote have to vote in favor for the merger to pass.
Excellent. Thanks, Ken. Selena, a member online has asked us if we could revisit your response to no-fee accounts and will the accounts transfer with all existing features? I really asking if they will stay as no-fee accounts.
Yes, so today Canexus offers a no-fee account. And speaking to our Canexus members, there will be a no-fee account once the merged entity comes together. Our two other partners have a low-fee option. So we're just committed to making sure that what people are used to, accustomed to today, will be there in the new merged entity. So the answer to your question is yes, no-fee will remain.
Thank you. Selena, I know you know the answer to this one. A member is asking how will they vote if they don't live near a credit union branch?
Okay, thank you for posing the question. So there are three ways to vote. The first way and probably the easiest way is to use your digital banking app. As soon as you log on to your app, a banner will appear and you can just click on that banner and it leads you to the decision. That's the question for you to vote. So you're already authenticated through that, so no additional work there. The second way is to go online and visit us at our canexus.ca/vote. And then the third way is to come see us in branch, for those who would like to come see us. If you're voting online or in branch, you will be required to know your member number and your year of birth as those are the two qualifiers required in order to validate you using those two different platforms.
That's great. Thank you. I'm just going to check if there's any other questions. I'm seeing none and that last question, actually, we might go over that information again.
Sure.
So I want to thank everyone for your questions. If you require additional information as you consider the resolution to merge recommended today, please reach out to us through our contact form on thrivingtogethersk.ca website or feel free to stop into your local branch or call our member contact center to connect with an employee for help. With that, I'll pass it back to Selena and she can reiterate how to vote and we'll go from there.
Thank you so much, Annette. So while Canexus is officially asking for your support in approving this merger, it is ultimately up to you, our members. It is your voice and your vote that we want to hear. As you can see on the screen, after you log into the voting platform, this is the information that will be presented on the ballot. Members may cast their vote by voting in favor or against the resolution to approve the merger and amalgamation agreement. Member voting will begin tonight, starting at 6:30 PM and close next Friday on June 13th at noon. Members will be able to vote in three different ways. The first and the easiest for members to vote is through their digital banking app by clicking on the Vote Now banner that will appear, taking you directly to the voting platform with no additional login requirements. Second, members will be able to vote online by visiting us at canexus.ca/vote. And third, by stopping in at their local branch to use one of the in-branch iPad voting stations. If voting online or at the branch, members again will need to have their membership number and their year of birth in order to log in. Your membership number can be found at the top right corner of your monthly statement.
We are formally asking for your support in moving forward with this merger. Whatever happens, it will be you, our members, who will decide the future direction of the credit union. Again, member voting will open tonight at 6:30 PM, closing on Friday, June 13th at noon. And I encourage all members to participate in this important democratic practice, one of our major differences from a big bank. Share your voice and vote. The meeting will be adjourned upon the expiration of the special resolution voting period and conclusion of the counting of votes cast. The announcement of the special resolution voting results will take place on June 18th. As we wrap up today's special meeting of the members, I want to once again acknowledge the impact the wildfires are having on our communities. To our members who are directly affected, please know that Canexus is here for you. If you have questions or a concern about how this emergency may affect your finances, we encourage you to reach out. We're ready to help. We remain committed to supporting both our employees and members through this challenging time. And we extend our sincere thanks to the brave first responders who are working tirelessly to protect our communities. Thank you for your continued trust in Canexus and for joining us this evening for this important meeting.